Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, November 27th, 2017. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocic.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation. I'm not sure if Jeff Hilbert is here. Oh, there he is. We will have the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as we enter into this holiday season, we just ask that you just watch over our citizens, those that maybe they've lost a loving member of their family this year, and this is their first holiday without them. Lord, we ask that you comfort them. We ask that you watch over our families that are struggling at this season and this time. Help them as well. We thank you for our council meeting tonight. We ask that you bless the council leaders as they make decisions on behalf of your citizens. We give you the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no presentations this evening, so we'll move to Citizens Communication, the Council on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I do have one speaker card. It's, it looks like Anne Marie Montgomery?
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Anne Marie Montgomery, and I am the Supervisor of the Ceres Library. I'd just like to tell you about some of the upcoming programs we have at the Ceres Library. Over the next few weeks, we're going to have a Lego Play Day, a Star Wars craft, and a winter craft. And all crafts and programs are taking place at 3:30 on Thursday afternoon. There will be no Wiggle Worm Storytime or Preschool Storytime during December. The Wiggle Worm Storytime and Preschool Storytimes are on Monday and Tuesday, and those will resume in January. We Move and Play, a program of music and educational toys, will be held on Wednesday, December 6th and 20th at 11:30. We have an adult book club. The Ceres Library Book Club meets on the fourth Wednesday of the month at 11:30. December's selection is "Prayers for Sale" by Sandra Dallas. Anyone in the community is welcome to stop by and pick up a copy at the Ceres Library. We are taking sign-ups for a new cycle of computer classes at the library. Computer basics, email basics, basic word processing. Space is limited, but again, any member of the community can come by and sign up. All programs and information are available online at stanlibrary.org and in printed calendars that we give away at the libraries. All programs at the Ceres Library are free of charge. These programs are brought to you through the 1/8 cent dedicated sales tax that supports the library, as well as the continuing support of our Friends of the Ceres Library group. Anyone is welcome to stop by at any time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Lee Brant, and I live on Haley Lohot in Ceres. I didn't realize that Mr. Shepherd was going to be here, and I was going to kind of stand in for him, although he has big shoes to fill. But I just wanted to give you an update on the fire at Sam's Cafe. It's not really an update. Sheila and I, we got there right as the fire was put out, and we were just impressed by how many firefighters were there and how the work was done and the cooperation of the, nor actually, what is it, the resource sharing between the fire departments. I didn't realize, I mean, you guys well know where I know the fire trucks. I knew that we had one of our fire trucks there, and the ladder truck was there, and there was other trucks there that I did not really recognize. Of course, it was dark and stuff like that. Turns out that it was part of the resource sharing, and these guys were just on the ball. They were kind of standing around when we first approached it, and there had to be 17 to 20 firefighters there. And after a little while, all of a sudden, everybody started to work, and they worked together. You know, they had hoses they had to roll up, they had to clean up and stuff like that. They just, the cooperation amongst those guys was amazing. You know, they go to roll up their hoses, only one guy just started rolling up the hoses. The other guys went to a different hose. There wasn't two and three guys trying to roll up one hose. They were just very, very cooperative. And I just want to, you know, throw my support in for the resource sharing plan.
Gee, this seems kind of strange. I'm back! You know, Lee was surprised. I'm not. Ceres Fire, those guys have got it together. And they've been teaching, I think, Modesto and Keys and other people how to get it together because whenever they're involved, things go right. It may be going to Hades in a handbasket, but they're the guys to take care of it. And I'm proud to say that Ceres is the best in the county. Because believe me, after 35 years of doing it, I know what's good and what isn't. So, you've got a darn good fire department. You've got guys that, they care. That's the main thing. And then, they train. They train like their lives depend on it, because they do. So, that wasn't what I was going to get up here and talk about, but I'm glad to throw my support in for the finest fire department in this county, and I might say, one of the finest in the state. So, they've been getting a lot of activity lately, too. And so have our brothers in blue. Well, we're both in blue now. I never wore the blue, but anyway, the police department's outstanding. So you guys are lucky in this city to have a police and fire department that's, they're up on top. Now, I'm going to say, it's time to say Merry Christmas. I know it is, because the big white dog is out in Ken Lane's front yard. When the white dog shows up, it's Christmas time. And we walked, drove by and stopped and talked to Ken and Yvette the other day, and it wasn't anything there hardly. And at the end of the day, it looked like, well, Christmas Tree Lane, you know? So I'm going to start calling him Christmas Tree Lane instead of Ken, so. But anyway, I'm happy, in a way, to be back, even though they didn't operate on my knee like I was, they were supposed to. But I want to say that City Council meetings may be boring sometimes, but they are not stupid like television. And when you've got nothing to do but watch television or a computer on Monday nights, I'm back.
Hello, Wes Stamper. I reside on Linden Drive. So I wanted to touch a little bit more on the Sam's Cafe fire that we had last week. And as most of you know, it happened on Friday evening. I got the word via Central Valley TV, and like most people that are regulars there, I drove right down to see how bad the damage was. Sam's Cafe, to a lot of people in this community, has been more than just a place to go eat. That's where you go to connect with your buddies. You can always count on a table full of Lions Club members or straw optimists. I know that's where I would go to meet my grandpa, or go take my sons to have a nice breakfast or lunch with their great-grandpa. It was a community gathering. And Cheryl and her staff have done a number, more things than probably anybody in this room can count for this community. That woman just did not have no in her vocabulary. Any event she was a part of, she donated to, she advertised for. And so, like Mr. Shepherd said, Christmas is upon us. It's time for the community to get into that Christmas spirit. And so, you know, as soon as my wife and I got back home from looking at the fire, we just sat on the couch and just kind of gazed off, and I looked over at my wife, and I just gave her the nod, and she already knew exactly what was coming. It's time to fundraise, and that's exactly what we did. Within 24 hours, we had a 15-man committee set up, and Twalome River Lodge offered services, and within 24 hours, we had over 300 people via Facebook wanting to get involved in some way, shape, or form. So we have a date set up for December 15th, and the urge for this to happen so quickly is, you think about the magnitude, it wasn't just a fire at the facility. 10 people lost their jobs, and how many of them, you know, had children? So you're talking upwards of 25 to 30 people that are going to have a really hard Christmas and holiday season. And so, the urgency to get something set up right away was to help ease that pain for them. So December 15th, and we have since moved the location over to the American Legion Hall. 6 o'clock, we will have a dinner dance, and we have a Facebook page set up. Tickets are going to go very fast, and the Facebook page is called "The Holiday Hoedown for Sam's Cafe." And on that, if you're not able to attend, I have included a list of employees and their children and their ages and gender. If you would like to donate any sort of Christmas gift, toys, clothes, what have you, I would encourage everybody in this room to go ahead and check that out. Get with me personally. Again, my contact information is on that Facebook page. So let's show them what Ceres is about. You know, this is going to be a great movement. I mean, 300 people in 24 hours was huge. I've done a lot of community events, you know, on the national level. Never had that kind of response before. This is going to be great. And just another pointer, I probably still smell like smoke. I took a tour this afternoon with Cheryl and Mr. Brett Salvera and News 10, ABC 10, did an interview with Cheryl and myself regarding the fire and the devastation that it's caused and just the impact that Sam has had on this community. And I must tell you, I'm dang proud to be a part of Ceres, and the outreach and support is solidifying of that, so. Thank you, guys.
Hi, you guys know who I am. I'm Sheila Brant. I think I must be queen of the fundraisers. If I'm not trying to get funds for the water tower, now we're going to do funds for Sam's Cafe. I'm sure just about everyone here knows where Sam's Cafe is, and I just have to say, I am so, so very proud of our fire department, our police department, all rallying to help out with this, our community members. It's awesome that we're getting this all together in short time to help out one of our businesses here in Ceres, and it's a place, I know it sounds corny, if anyone watched Cheers on TV, that's how Sam's is. Everybody knows your name. You go in there, everyone's saying hi to each other. If someone needs coffee, you go up, you get the coffee pot, you pour coffee for people, and it's just a very fun place to be. And like Wes said, Cheryl helps out. The woman doesn't know how to say no. If you go up to her asking for anything, she's always there to help, and it's just really time for us to help, help, help her. And like Wes said, we have just gotten such an overabundance of people wanting to help, and we're just so proud. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. With that, we will move on. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening. Conflict of Interest Declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 10 consent calendar items or two discussion items? Hearing none, we will move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed on the Consent Calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of the staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Okay? Is there anyone in the audience that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Number six.
Six. Is that Mr. Shepherd? Is that you? Okay. All right. With that, I'll look for direction on the remaining items.
Move for approval of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Lane, a second by Councilmember DeRocic, and we have the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeRocic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd. Item number six, Providing Old Fire Department Badges to the Ceres Professional Firefighters,
Not that I'm against it, I just don't underst, what old firefighter badges? Are they ones that the Ceres replaced at one time, or what?
Yes. A year and a half or so ago, the department was looking to refurbish the existing badges, realized the price for the refurbishment was more than half of their cost to buy new badges, so the union volunteered to pay for half, with the understanding that they would get the old badges. So, union paid for half, city paid for half, and this effort basically is taking what is now determined to be surplus from the city's perspective, giving it to the union. They hold harmless with the city, and then the union's able to distribute those to the members.
That's great. Somebody's got a brain! Hallelujah! Okay. As far as I'm concerned, go for it, guys. Say yes.
Any other questions or comments on this item? I'll bring them back to the council for direction. Move to approve Providing Old Fire Department Badges to the Ceres Professional Firefighters, 3636.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Klein, a second by Councilmember Rhino. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocic.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearings, no new business. We have two discussion items. The first is Kids' Choice Healthy Drinks in Kids' Meals Campaign.
We'll invite Lourdes Perez up to give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and staff, my name is Lourdes Perez. I am here as a Ceres resident and on behalf of Cultiva la Salud, a program of Sierra Health Foundation. As a former employee of Center for Human Services, I came to you about a month and a half ago requesting an opportunity to come before you to present the information on a Healthy by Default ordinance. So first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity and your responsiveness. Tonight, we come to you with a plea to pass the Healthy by Default ordinance that will make water or milk the default beverage in kids' combo meals, whether it be fast food restaurants or sit-in restaurants. We submitted a PowerPoint presentation to you for tonight. However, there have been some updates. Public Health Advocates has been very successful in getting Long Beach and other cities to pass the ordinance. So since it's a bit outdated, we want to go with a verbal presentation instead. We have included packets there before you, and our packets, you can find the survey results for local restaurants. We did conduct a survey with a series of questions, and you have that sample survey included, as well as all the results from the restaurants that were surveyed. We have also included local data, showing some of the information for Ceres, as well as the county, letters of support from Ceres Unified School District, Ceres Collaborative. And additionally, we have conducted educational workshops as part of Center for Human Services. We had over 200 employees in support of the ordinance, and we have also brought with us about 600 support cards from residents, voters of Ceres, all here for you if you wish to see them, in support of the ordinance. So what we would like to do is invite Kanat Tibet of the Public Health Advocates to come up with me and present some of the information. I do want to remind you, here in our city, 44% of our children suffer from obesity or an issue of overweight, so it's a very serious issue for this community, for this population. We already have 14 chain restaurants in support of the Healthy by Default. That list is included in the packet. Some of these include McDonald's, Jack in the Box, Wendy's, Subway, Burger King, and others which are local restaurants here as well. The Healthy by Default is allowed to change the social norm with healthy beverages to be the default in kids' meal. So the fact that we have 14 chain restaurants in support really speaks to the feasibility of businesses here in our town to be able to implement and transition to make this Healthy by Default the norm in our community. As I expressed, we did conduct the outreach. We do have also with us Cherie Sprouse, who is the current Chair of the Heart Coalition. It is a county-wide collaborative, and she will be up here as well to present some of the information on behalf of the Coalition. And I do really make the plea that this council has a powerful role to play in protecting the citizens of Ceres by making the healthy choice the easy choice. Our children need that protection. We need to stand for the health of the children of Ceres, and we ask that you pass this policy to support parents who are working hard day-to-day to educate and also support their children. I did want to share some of the key findings for the surveys, the restaurants that were surveyed, and we had 86% of those restaurants already serving kids' meals that offer sodas. And the majority of these restaurants have the healthy beverage already in place. About 57% of those restaurants offer water or milk. And again, those results are there in your packet. We also spoke with owners and managers of local restaurants, and out of 10 managers and owners that we spoke of, seven of those indicated they would support this ordinance and would be happy to comply with it. So again, we are hoping that your decision is to support the community of Ceres, the children of Ceres. So at this time, I would like to invite Kanat Tibet to present the rest of the information.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us. I work for the Public Health Advocates. I know some of you, worked with you in the past. This Healthy Kids Default Beverage Project is funded by the American Heart Association, Robert Wood Johnson, Kaiser Permanente, and for non-lobbying parts, community resident training, et cetera, the California Endowment. And we just entered our third year. To name the cities who passed this ordinance, the city of Stockton, city of Paris, city of Long Beach, Cathedral City, Berkeley, and Davis. And we're currently working with the city of Ceres, Turlock, Modesto, Riverside, Compton, and a number of cities approached us from Napa County and Solano County to work with them as well. In a nutshell, this ordinance is not a government mandate, it's not, it doesn't restrict businesses, there's no fiscal implications on businesses. What it simply does is, it does not apply to a la carte. It applies to kids' combo meals who are purchased for children ages 2 to 8, where the meal comes as a combo, where the beverage is included. If the beverage is a sugary beverage, the ordinance asks the establishment to make the default beverage water or milk, and leaving the parent to make the last decision choice. Should I say, I still want a lemonade for my son, I get the lemonade at no extra cost. As Lourdes indicated, this is about a social norm change. We're trying to educate the community by asking, by having people ask the question, why is this changed? And already McDonald's, Burger King, Subway, Quiznos, Dairy Queen, Applebee's, Jack in the Box, they have already adopted this as a policy and are implementing it. So, we have several more people who wanted to sort of like testify and bring out their opinion from the community, but I just want to see some hands from the community members who worked with us through this and who would like to see this happen. Thank you. And we couldn't bring 600 people to the council meeting, but I have two young ladies who wanted to make a plea to you and have you hear how they feel about this, who are the future of the community.
Good afternoon. My name is Naomi. I'm 19 years old, and I'm a Ceres resident.
Good afternoon. My name is Naili Castellanos. I am a Central Valley senior, and I am a Ceres resident. So, it's allowed to talk about something, but physically seeing it is a totally different feel. Do you have the... In this little Pepsi one, you see that there's only 17 teaspoons of sugar in here, and yeah, we all drink it, but, and while she's doing that, she'll be pouring 17 in there, showing how much little kids are getting in their meals. And while she does that, I'll kind of explain why this kind of, this subject hits home. I have a lot of family members that have had and still have diabetes, and I've had a great-grandpa pass away because of it, and I have a grandpa right now that isn't able to walk because of his, him getting diabetes, starting off with diabetes and then leading up to other health issues, and it's just, it may not be like a big impact for, that we may not think that's a big impact for kids, but it's a start where it shows them that we do care about them and we do just want, just changing a little thing in drinking water or drinking milk is so much better than just seeing them pour soda down their body, which will not benefit them in any way or form. And, I don't know if you want to add something? So basically, what we're doing is, in this little cup, what you would usually give a child is 17 teaspoons of sugar. So this is what it is, a measured cup of soda. You wouldn't eat this, so why are you giving this to your small children to the ages 2 to 8, so they can drink this? You're literally pouring them diabetes in a cup. If you, as a parent, would not eat this, why would you give it to your son or daughter It's just basically a lot of importance to us, even though we are, we're just trying to set an example for siblings, for the rest of the family. It's just a start, and it's just, seeing this, I wouldn't want to just, it's basically just giving my little sister a little teaspoon, and her eating it with no health problems and anything, but yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cherie Sprouse, and I'm the current Chair of the Heart Coalition of Stanislaus County. And I've been with the Heart Coalition for probably longer than I care to admit, but we are really passionate about childhood obesity for at least the last decade or so. And my last crusade, I will say, or my last item as a Coalition member that I really was behind and championed, along with Lourdes, was our Heal Cities resolutions. And we were, at one time, the forefront and the leader in the state with all of our cities, as well as our county, being the first in the state to adopt Heal Cities resolutions. Since then, Ceres adopted theirs in March of 2012. Since then, the cities really haven't championed or went any further than the resolution and putting some teeth behind that with some policy. And so when this was presented to us as a Coalition to support and endorse, it aligned great with what our goals are, which are to reduce sugar-sweetened beverages, to promote healthy beverages. Our biggest one is rethink your drink, as well as increasing the consumption of fresh fruits and vegetables. The Coalition, in between the Heal Cities Resolution and championing those and working with the cities and seeing the importance as the community's leader and official decision-maker of all of the residents, that we were, and actually, Ceres hosted one, a Community Viewing of Fed Up, which is a documentary that talks about the sugar-sweetened beverages and the impacts that it has on Americans' health, as well as their overall diet. With that, I really am here to endorse... With that, I really am here to endorse and to say that there is a direct correlation between sugar-sweetened beverages, especially in that foundation age of two to eight. They're already brand identifying by that age. Shockingly, it's happening younger and younger, that brand loyalty. These large sugar-sweetened beverage industries are, they know exactly what they're doing. They're the tobacco industry of our new millennium. And this is what our kids are going to be facing. They're going to be facing being an amputee and blind and all of these other health consequences that we just are, can say we're projecting and forecasting. I just fear for our workforce of the future, of youth and children today that are inundated, and it's not a sometimes treat anymore. And I'm speaking as a mother of two young children. I will say, my oldest son is probably traumatized because he lived through, in the womb, my gestational diabetes, but he actually lived through it, because I did the smart thing and spaced my children out a good six years, and got to see me have gestational diabetes with his brother. So he is all about the water. He is definitely, we pull up, even through the drive-through, hurry, get something to eat after soccer practice, "What do you want?" "To drink water." I'm like, "I'm paying for this. Really, what do you want to drink? You just had soccer practice. You can have a treat." "No, Mom, I want water. Really, I want water." So he gets it. And it's nice to not have that fight. I don't anticipate it'll be the same for my younger one. He's going to be my stubborn-headed, I can tell already. He's at that feisty age of two. And it just would be nice if I was able to live in a community that is basically also known for its high fast-food retail index, the highest in the state, meaning we have the most fast food per capita than any other county, that if I didn't have to combat that, that those environments that we are going to encounter also reinforce what I'm teaching at home, but also what they're getting in school. It doesn't just fall to the school sector. It doesn't just fall to the home sector. It really is about making that social norm change and it being fluid throughout all of the intersections of our lives. And so as not only the Heart Coalition Chair, but also as resident and parent, I just really urge you all to pass this ordinance. It may seem minor on the scale, but it actually is so impactful with reinforcing that social norm change for children. So, thank you.
Lastly, I want to introduce a parent from Series. Her name is Maria Nevaris.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Maria Nevaris. Este, yo voy a compartir algo que me, en realidad, me pasó, y estoy aquí para apoyar este, a Lourdes, y bueno, no nomás a Lourdes, sino a toda la comunidad de aquí de Series, y somos varias personas donde, en realidad, quisiéramos que hubiera el cambio. En lo personal, yo fui diagnosticada prediabetes. So cuando fui al doctor, y él me dijo, ¿sabe qué? Todos los resultados de su sangre, todo salió bien, excepto este, que usted es prediabetes. Y dije, ¿cómo voy a ser prediabetes? En realidad, pues yo estoy delgada, hago ejercicio. ¿Y por qué? O sea, yo me, la verdad, me espanté, la verdad, porque dije, pues, o sea, ¿qué está pasando si yo estoy haciendo todo eso? So me dijo, okay, ¿usted toma soda? Dije, sí. ¿Come chocolates? Sí. ¿Jugos? Sí. Dijo, esto tiene bastante azúcar. Este, él igual me dijo, pues realmente tienes que hacer una dieta. Tomé responsabilidad porque, en realidad, pues, la verdad, no estaba tan enterada de todo eso, porque, en realidad, pues, te borbandea todo, vas a McDonald's o cualquier restaurante, y luego encuentras las máquinas de sodas principalmente, ¿no? Y pues, la verdad, fui muy como muy adicta más que nada a la soda, y realmente, pues tomé responsabilidad. Esto fue en el dos mil dieciséis. ¿Qué pasó eso en el mito dos mil diecisiete, que es este año? So, vuelvo a checar, so ya no, todo está bien, pero este, lo que yo hice fue evitar eso. Jugos, sodas, y chocolates. Eso me apoyó bastante. Y una cosa que me preocupa mucho es mi hija. Mi hija tiene dieciséis años, se llama Jessica. Este, ella está obesa, y pues, qué bueno que no vino, porque si no, ¿verdad? Y este, realmente, si vamos a un restaurante, desgraciadamente, pues lo único que te pueden dar, la opción de sodas, jugos. Y yo, yo estoy trabajando en ella, de que sea consciente, pero cuando es una niña, son dieciséis años, una chamaca, me cuesta, me cuesta, y vuelvo. Y las máquinas de sodas, las tienes a un lado. Este, en realidad, me gustaría que realmente en los, en la comida se agregara la leche y el agua, porque es más saludable. Y pues, en realidad, es apoyar a los niños. Bueno, apoyarnos nosotros como adultos, pero más bien ser conciencia y apoyar a esos niños. Este, gracias, es todo.
I'm going to go ahead and translate for her. Her name is Maria Nevaris, and what she spoke of is about her personal story. So back in two thousand and sixteen, she told her story where she was diagnosed prediabetic, and the main reasons were the soda consumption. She also drank a lot of juice. So the doctor asked for her to make changes to her diet. She eliminated the soda, the sugar, and she has a daughter who is sixteen. And her biggest concern is her daughter, because whenever they go out to eat to restaurants or fast food, the options that are available there are sodas and sugary beverages, vending machines by the side. So she took responsibility upon herself, but she is asking and making the plea that we also take responsibility for children and protect the children, just like she wishes to do it as a parent. So thank you.
I think that's what we're very quiet questions, concerns. So the plea is the city to consider adopting the ordinance, and we have sample ordinances. Other cities have done it. It does not have any impact on businesses. We are simply trying to curb marketing of sugary beverages who have a direct correlation with diabetes. We want to curb marketing of these beverages to two- to eight-year-olds as the ultimate first choice. The first choice, the default choice should be the healthy choice. That's how we grew up fifty years ago. The trend has changed. Everything's larger now. So let's make water or milk the default choice. If the parent still wants to order the sugary beverage, they go ahead and do it at no extra cost. Questions?
Are there any questions?
No questions.
No questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments? Vice Mayor Klein?
You know, you know, growing up, we used to look forward to going to my great-grandmother's house, because we would get a cup of sugar in a bowl, and we'd lick our finger, and that's, I mean, that was our, our treat at our great-grandmother's house. And, you know, you look back on things, if, you know, my mother allowed that to happen, you know? And I think it's ultimately, to me, the responsibility of the parents, when they're ordering their kids Happy Meals or five-dollar buckets or baskets, and it's ultimately the the parent's responsibility of ages two through eight, through two through ten, to order them the milk, the water. I have three grandkids under the age of three, and we don't give them a choice. Right now, they drink nothing but water. Couple of them drink formula. That's what their mom gives them. But we don't give them a choice of having a sugary beverage. We don't give them the choice of having an energy drink. I don't drink energy drinks, because I don't believe in them. So with that being said, from my standpoint, okay, I think it's the responsibility of the parents, when they order their, their kids Happy Meals or, or their stuff at a fast-food restaurant, it's the parent's responsibility to request a water or to request a low-fat milk. And I'm afraid that if this, this body sets an ordinance, then it becomes an ordinance that maybe we need to enforce. And I don't see where that's enforceable. I don't think that it's our responsibility as, as, you know, the city council to dictate to restaurants or whatever. To me, it's the parents' responsibilities. I, I feel this way. I do this with my kids. You know, my, my kids didn't drink sodas until they were in high school, and now they're in their thirties. And I have, my son drinks probably a quarter milk a day and a bunch of water. And, you know, my daughters are completely different. But we raised them with what, what the norm was. At my house, my wife drinks nothing but tea and water, and I drink soda. And she gave it up two and a half years ago. So from my standpoint, it's very hard for me to sit here and endorse an ordinance when I feel ultimately it's the parent's responsibility when they turn around and go in and make, and do the order, when they place the order for their kid. So from that's my standpoint. Okay? Councilmember DeRosa?
Yeah, Lourdes, I've known you for many years. I commend your, your fight for this, you know, being a physical education teacher and, you know, seeing the importance of, of being able to live a healthy lifestyle, because that's what we try to promote, is living healthy lifestyles and so forth and so on. But I'm going to have to agree with Vice Mayor Klein. It's, it's, it's not the council's, at least I don't believe this, at least it's not my responsibility to go to McDonald's and tell them what they can and cannot do. It's not government's job at all, period. But one of the things I'm seeing is being an educator for the last twenty-five years is what we're doing, is we're always given, and when I say this, bear with me, parents, a kind of a cop-out, to not have the parents be responsible for making the correct decisions for the children. I can recall, I can see my, my little nephew, he's eight years old, and just the other day, we were at, I think we were at McDonald's, and he wanted to order a Coke with his Happy Meal, and his dad said, "No, you're going to have milk." That's just the way it is, right? But, but at the very end of the day, I, I think that if we, if we agree with this policy and change it and make an ordinance, then we're going to be changing other things as time moves on, because somebody's going to see that there's a need in regards to, you know, you can only order one thing of fries, or you can only have two donuts if you go to, and I'm using, trying to give an example. But I, I just see that this is a slippery slope. And then how do you enforce it? And I agree with Councilor, Vice Mayor Klein. I talked to one of the managers at KFC today, and I asked him this question about, because this was being brought upon us, and the first thing he was like, "Yes! I can sell milk, and I can sell this apple juice that he had right there." And if you know where KFC is in Series, you know what I'm talking about. And then I said, "Okay, and then how are we going to enforce it?" And then I kind of started explaining some of the things to him in regards to, you know, as council people, we're going to make these decisions, and it can change everything, and it may change businesses to maybe want to come to Series. Not this particular ordinance, but if we nitpick and we micromanage businesses, and I, I don't think we do that. And I completely agree, obesity is a huge problem. It's, it's a killer. I get it. Diabetes is a huge problem. Most of the people in my family have diabetes. It's not from soda pop, though. I can, I can tell you that. But at the same time, I just think that we're going to, we're going to run into some situations if, if we allow this to happen. So I commend your fight, and, you know, I, I know the school district is in support of this. You being a school board member, our schools, we've got to start with the education. I think we have to start with inside the school, two to eight, you know, send some stuff home to the parents, so they can see what's going on anyways.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
I would agree with both Vice Mayor Klein and Councilmember DeRosa that it's the parents' responsibility. I have three grandchildren, and they never ask me for soda or fruit juice, because they know they're not going to get it from me. They, they know it. It's, an option is milk or water, and I'm certainly not going to let my almost-three-year-old twin grandchildren tell me that they want to drink a soda with their meal. I mean, it's just not an option. And again, I don't think it's the city's responsibility, or it's not even in what we should be telling the community for us to tell people what, or to tell businesses what they should be serving children.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes. You know, I agree, this is a great program, and I, I believe that it would be, be helpful if voluntarily they would, every restaurant that you talk to, it sounds like quite a few of them in Series are already doing it, so that's a good thing. The problem I have with it is government involvement. I mean, I really am sick and tired of government telling me when and what to do. You know, it's no different than the gas tax that were passed, and I'll sit here from this, from, from right here from this dais, and, and state it, that I'm sick and tired of government taking the voice out of the people's hands. And I understand there's six, there's six hundred folks that said this would be a good thing, and, you know, and it is a good thing. Don't get me wrong. I think it's a great thing. But I don't think it's government's responsibility to tell people how to run their businesses, that, for that matter, their own homes. So I do think it's parents' responsibility, and Lourdes, you being a school board member, I know you're educating, and you guys are doing a wonderful job in the schools, too. I think that's a great thing. I think that's where you can send some literature home, and I'd be so supportive of that in educating the kids. But, but, you know, again, I think it's a great program, and I would hope that restaurants would voluntarily offer these, these types of items on their menus. But again, with, in my position, I'm tired of government telling anybody what to do anymore. I'm just really, it's getting really frustrating for me. And when I say gas tax, we just had the biggest tax hike in the state of California. State of California without the people's vote, biggest one ever without the people's vote. So this is just one more thing that government should not be involved in. So that's where I stand.
Okay. First of all, thank you for presenting to us. Obviously, this is a passionate thing that many of you feel. I must agree with my colleagues here on a, on a number of points. Obviously, I agree one hundred percent wholeheartedly with you that healthy drinks are something that's important in our society. But I keep going back to what I'm, my colleagues are saying, that education has to start at the home. That's what's wrong with society today. We're missing that link. The education is not of an enforcement of government coming down with a rule that tells you what you can and cannot do. It starts at the home. We all need to look in the mirror and say, "If our children are drinking sugar drinks, it's not because of the government, it's not because of the restaurant, it's because we're not doing our job as parents." And that's where we have to do it. So as much as I agree with you one hundred percent, I cannot say that government should be the responsible party for that. That's a form of socialism. And I believe in democracy, not socialism. I don't believe that the government should be dictating what people are drinking or eating. I'll make an argument that a lot of these restaurants don't have healthy food. I mean, let's, let's take a look at the hamburger and all the other stuff that's on there, not just the sugary drinks. There's a lot of bad things on there, and, you know, I probably shouldn't be saying that, because the businesses won't be happy, but let's face it, there's a lot of, the drinks are just one microscopic part of what they're serving. And my comment would be, if there are businesses out there that are serving the healthy drinks, frequent those, and then go away from the ones that have the sugary drinks. Pretty soon, the sugary drink places will go out of business, and you won't have to worry about them. It's, it's, it's the law of supply and demand. So I, 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 I believe this is not something government should get involved in. I mean, I don't know how many of you follow government, but government gets a lot of things wrong. And I think having government involved in this, management of this is, is not the correct direction. Now, if it's something to where you want us to say that we support healthy drink choices, yeah, we, I, I think that there's not one of us here that would say, "No, we don't support that," or "We wouldn't sign on for a campaign for that." But I don't think putting it in an ordinance that requires a business to do it is the direction that I could support. So I, I don't know if that gives enough direction. Tom, or do we need to take any type of formal action?
Just need, we would need three of you to say and move forward this. This was a discussion item, so in order for us to bring in ordinance before you with a noticing process, we didn't want to go to that step until council's given that direction. Still hearing five in opposition to that direction, then this item would, would, would be. Still hearing five, uh, in opposition to that direction, uh, then this item would, would, would be.
If we were to do something that said we're in support of a healthy campaign, we could do that?
But we've done resolutions of that nature.
Resolution?
Yeah, we could work with them if there's a resolution that they would like.
Okay.
You could do resolution. That's just a, that's a regular agenda item. An ordinance, you know, requires some legal effort, you know, public hearing notice, you know, full schedule to, two meetings of adoption. So, but a resolution could be put on any agenda.
Okay. Uh, Vice Mayor Klein? No, and that's the question I was gonna ask mayor is, is, you know, if we can do a letter or something in support of the healthy drinks. With it up, and, and that's the direction I was gonna go. So. Okay. So do you want to make that motion? I'll, I'll make a motion that staff bring back a resolution for a letter to adopt that, uh, the city council, uh, supports the healthy drinks.
A letter or a resolution? So a letter the mayor could sign without taking council action, but.
Well, I'd say a resolution because we all support it. Whatever. Is your motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Um, well, let's just make it a formal. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocci?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. So we will be coming forward with a, a resolution that supports the healthy drinks. Okay? Okay, now we will move on to item number 12, code enforcement discussion. I don't know if at this time, if you want, and I'll give you a couple of minutes if you want to depart. Sure. Okay, Mr. Wells?
Well, that sure cleared, cleared out the room. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this evening's follow-up of an item that was brought to our attention earlier, uh, this, I guess the end of summer, uh, regarding, uh, discussion on nuisance, which is really kind of wrapped into a couple of different topics, but we just titled it, uh, code enforcement nuisance discussion. So tonight we'll talk about these couple of things. And we just talked about government regulations. So I guess, I, I think I was really knew what was going on by picking this little picture here. Uh, okay, let's see your building permit as the guy's talking to the kids building their sandcastle. But those are the items we'll talk about tonight and we'll just jump right into it. So wanted just kind of a reminder, both for the crowd and for the council, that, you know, the municipal code, when we talk code enforcement, we're talking about the enforcement of this book. So this book of law is broken into chapters. There's 19, two that are, um, don't have anything in there. And then inside of those titles, different chapters, different sections. Um, and there's quite a bit of overlap between the different topics. And, and as, as you know, the way we amend our book of laws through an ordinance. And so that ordinance comes up over time and we add on to different sections. So for example, um, the RV parking section that we'll talk to this evening, we didn't have a section in there that specifically talked about that. In 2001, this body took action to create that ordinance, which added language to our law, our, our, our code book to deal with, uh, how to park and store, uh, RV vehicles. And for those of you who are on the council or the planning commission at that point in time was a rather contentious item. But in the grand scheme of things, our overall law book has changed over years as we've added ordinances to it. And as we were nearing, uh, this conversation about our general plan, this is something that we had plans for updating a comprehensive to make sure that it's both internally consistent and then vertically, vertically consistent, meaning consistent with our new general plan that we're, uh, working on. So that kind of gives you the framework for what we're talking about. When we talk about code enforcement and these two key definitions that we're talking about this evening, just wanted to again, give you that visual reminder of what our, our, our laws look like. So for the, the section is the, kind of the overall picture of recreational vehicle RV parking. As I mentioned, 2001, planning commission came up with a plan of attack of how to address RV parking. It came to the council and the council kind of had a different opinion, uh, of those, um, rules that were being proposed. And there's a couple of key phrases in there, um, that the council really hung their hat on. And that was, it's written into the ordinance is the reference to the folks that had an existing house who have made a substantial investment in an RV or something like that and had, were already using those. And the council was very cognizant of the investment that those folks had made in those activities and being able, were afraid of taking those away from folks. So that kind of frames how this document was put together in terms of two separate really cate- categories of kind of pre 2001 and this, uh, what we call PC zoning, which is, you know, a planned community zoning where we actually specifically designed lots for that availability of being able to store an RV on the side yard behind a fence. So it's kind of the breaking point. So in essence, we have two sets of rules, one kind of pre 2001 and that PC zoning and then post. Um, most folks don't recognize that difference, but that is a, a key differential. If you were to look at anything in East Gate, it's designed differently and is zoned differently than other parts of the city. So that's a key, uh, difference for where motorhomes, RVs can be parked. And again, there's references and overlaps to kind of, uh, you know, the nuisance section, which we'll talk about here in a second. Abandoned vehicles, that's a code section 10. Those are different categories. But for the overall purposes of recreational vehicles, our ordinance defines what they are. You can see it's listed there. Motor home, motorhomes pull behind trailers, campers, boats, utility trailers, and there's a longer list there. And it defines where they can and can't be parked. So for kind of the overview of where they can and can't be parked, um, this is kind of important to recognize what setbacks are and what, where the building envelope of a house is. So kind of that dash line there in the middle, the buildable area, and then you have all these other setbacks. And so those are legal requirements as to where things can be built in this built environment you're talking about. We have these setbacks for protection of neighboring properties and so that everybody knows the rules and follows them on what you can or can't build and where. So using that same framework becomes the framework for where you can park these types of vehicles. So again, our ordinance simply says, again, if it's not in a PC zone, but if it's in a other zone, loaded and properly zone, it can, an RV or trailer can be parked perpendicular to the primary street or parallel to a side street. So, um, this kind of gives you that overall picture of where things could be parked. And we can get into those details here in a second. But just want to keep that as a framework for where, um, the basis for our code section was created. Was on the basis of this setback. And that controls a lot of things from where fences can be, where other structures, accessory structures like sheds and pergolas or overhangs or covers, those are all governed by this setback, um, provision. So again, that comes into play under the nuisance conversation as well. Again, any questions, feel free to stop me as we're moving along. All right. So second section of the code section, um, that generally from a code enforcement standpoint that we use a lot is the nuisance, uh, section, chapter nine. Um, it, very broad, big, general, uh, perspective. Most times we, we get called to a complaint on a code enforcement type of issues. We can usually find at least one thing that would fall under this nuisance category. And it may have been different than what the original complaint was. But again, it covers many topics and it gives us quite a bit of tools, uh, to enable to try to deal with some of the situations. So next I'm gonna buzz through some pictures. Um, I contemplated doing a quiz on whether it was legal or not. But we'll, we'll just kind of buzz through a few of these quick pictures, which are examples. Um, and I'll give you kind of the overview of what we would look at from a code enforcement perspective. And again, primarily code enforcement is complaint driven. We are not staffed, nor are we in a mode of being proactively patrolling neighborhoods for especially RV parking and those type of issues that were, the, these are complaint driven process. We receive a complaint, those complaints are investigated, uh, and mitigated under a due process. And I'll cover that a little bit here. So in this particular example, there's a RV and a, in a, a utility trailer, uh, both under our existing code section would be considered compliant with the existing code. Um, there's a couple of issues you may be able to push, as long as that trailer's not up and over the curb would be a violation. But as that stands right there, and it wasn't parked for an extended period of time, um, those would be both legal situations. Again, registered, as long as they're registered.
Did they add on the concrete? So is that allowed, the additional amount of concrete?
Uh, we would have to look. That would be under that situation to the other side of the driveway, as long as there's sufficient yard. Although our code does not specify how much yard, meaning the front of their house would be to the, um, right of that picture. Assuming that there was yard there and they didn't concrete the entire yard end, then yes.
Because after a lot of the duplexes on Whitmore kind of made their whole front yard concrete, I thought something came before the council that they could only cement in a certain amount.
The general rule of thumb is 50% under a new development, can't go more than 50%. But most of those situations were prior to that.
Okay.
But in this case, uh, again, I'm, we're only looking at the garage. I'm not looking at the front of yard. The assumption is they didn't concrete the entire front of their house either. Like, so we're looking at the garage, the house would be to the right of that picture. Yeah, again, so it's, as long as the whole front yard isn't concrete, it's not an issue.
Okay.
Now, you said up to this ordinance, my house was built in 1963, so that means I can concrete my whole front yard?
No, we wouldn't allow you to do that.
But I could.
No, if you came and asked, but not everybody comes and asks.
Right.
So second one here, um, boat, uh, covered, provided it was licensed and registered, that would be, um, acceptable parking of that boat. However, if we got a complaint here, we would probably go and say, hey, there's looks like some debris in front of that boat. Uh, in front of where that truck's parked, looks like some tires. Those would be considered a nuisance. We would likely, uh, encourage and talk to them about getting compliance and getting that nuisance removed. Boat and an RV, again, as long as the trailer hitch is not hanging out over the sidewalk and causing obstruction on the sidewalk, that would be considered a legally parked. Now you can see a garbage can there to the other side of the RV. That's a violation of different code section of our book. Um, but that would be, looks like it's probably on the neighbor's property, not on this particular property. But if we got a complaint there, those are the type of things that we would respond to. This would be an example of what I think most people would be considered the ideal situation, where you have a side yard with sufficient room and you could park behind the fence. This is the perfect situation. However, if that RV were to be parked out in front of that fence, as long as the tongue or the front of that is not encroaching on the sidewalks, that would be considered legal as well. So here's a cargo trailer. Um, if we got a complaint on this, we would go out there and say that that trailer is legally parked. However, there are a few things that start to raise concerns about the condition. May not be maintained as well as it could be underneath there. Garbage cans, again, a few other things. You look at the house and go, this may be a bigger issue with, when the picture was taken about a month ago, two weeks ago, and there's Christmas lights up. That was pretty early for this particular year. Not that we're generally citing over Christmas lights left up year round, but it generally catches our attention in terms of potential for nuisance issues on a property in terms of whether it's being taken care of or not.
So our current ordinance allows vehicles to park on grass?
Yes, it does. It does not delineate between, uh, what surface they're being parked on.
Okay.
As long as it's perpendicular. We'll come back to these first. So again, boat, as long as it's legally licensed, this would be considered, um, illegally parked. Now, again, if we got a complaint on that boat, we'd probably respond to the nuisance of the garbage and other things that are clearly visible on this particular location that are right there behind the boat. Similar location here with a cargo trailer, as long as that hitch is not intruding onto the sidewalk, then that would be considered illegally parked, uh, cargo vehicle as well, utility falling under the RV code section. This one again, referring to the setback, this would be on a corner lot. So the, this would be considered consistent with our code section because it is parked parallel to that side street because the house faces, uh, the other direction. So here's an example where we've got two problems here. The tongue of the boat is extending into the sidewalk, so that's not considered legal. So that would be in, that would be a violation of section 1815. Uh, in addition, we got a complaint on this, we would respond to the things in the boat, uh, being considered a nuisance. Uh, that is not something that is under, you know, good repair and is clearly in that state of, of nuisance. So we would approach that particular situation under both phrase, both positions, both it being out on the sidewalk, creating, uh, you know, violating that section as well as a nuisance. Cite them under both. Obviously, as I mentioned, we're trying to get to compliance, get them to move and take care of this situation rather than just straight to citation. But we do have that ability. But recognize, we do have a due process requirement. We don't have the ability to just, most cases to just cite. We do have to go through a due process. So this is like I mentioned, another section. This would fall under section 10 of our municipal code, which would be most likely a non-operated vehicle. You can tell by the grass growing up, this vehicle hasn't moved in a long period of time. Um, this is something we would tack, tackle under Ava, our abandoned vehicle process, uh, and seek to get compliance in that direction.
But if, but if that car was registered, it could sit there?
Um, if it's non-operable, if it hasn't moved and there's no evidence of it being moved, I don't know the situation of that particular lot where that is. But likely it would not be able to stay there for any period of time with the way it's set right now. So again, this situation, if we got a complaint about the car being parked in the lawn, we would attack it under a nuisance. Um, that's not being maintained, properly maintained on that property with the other things that are on that lot, uh, we would attack it under a nuisance. There is no specific ordinance that says thou shall not park on a landscaped area. However, we have been successful in getting compliance using the nuisance, um, phrase of our quote code to get that. And this, this particular, back to that setback, um, this would not be allowed because it would be a structure in the setback area and not be permitted. Um, so anything like this would, does require a building permit based to its size. And it has a cover which would catch wind, um, could cause damage. So it would need to be bolted down and a permit would be required. Would not be permitted, um, because of its location within a setback. This would be a front yard setback. So as I mentioned, the code enforcement process, complaint driven process, we get complaints. We put those complaints in a, you know, basically a triage as they come in. You know, the highest priority are definitely the health and safety type of issues. These others, as our staff, uh, has time and works to go, uh, deal with those. So again, we seek to gain, um, compliance rather than citations. We've got a number of examples where we've cited people over and over four or five times and they pay the fine and don't take care of the issue. We want compliance. We want folks to get their properties in a good state of repair, to be good neighbors. Sometimes citations work and sometimes they don't. Um, we found that the best customer service is working with those, those offenders to get them to compliance, um, generally has longer term, um, not always. Uh, there's folks we do have to cite and we do that regularly, but we try to get to compliance. That's our, that's our goal. And as I mentioned, the due process. And when I mean that, there's a process delineated in our code, chapter 19, uh, specifically spells out how we deal with, uh, these types of situations, what we noticed, the timeframes, how the appeal process works and all of those, uh, due process requirements. And I can mention, you know, a lot of times we'll get a complaint on one specific issue. We get there and oftentimes it morphs into several other issues depending on the situation. So as I mentioned, you know, we, general undiscussion item, we're not giving a recommendation. However, with our timing, with where we're at and the age of our municipal code without a comprehensive update, we're very near, uh, the, kind of the real meat of our general plan being done. And we're hoping to be able to get started on our municipal code update, which we were planning on anyways, but to get that started a little bit sooner. So I mentioned, there's 19 sections of that municipal code. All but really one section, the zoning code, really aren't directly impacted by the general plan. So we would like to get started on our municipal code update, working with our city attorney who've already given us proposal to move forward on that kind of a parallel process. So as the general plan is finishing up in spring, we would be well underway of getting our municipal code completely updated, again, to get it internally consistent with the goal of having some workshops and information with the council in the summer of 2018. And this document completely finalized, uh, in November, um, October, November. And that way we would have municipal code updated right after and really quickly after the general plan. That is an item that is, um, is part of the general plan, one of the, um, recommended, uh, action items. We'd be able to get that tackled early in the process. So that's what we look for. So we would have the general plan, um, you know, kind of done in spring. We're targeting March, April. And then this would follow right after that. So it'd be kind of running in parallel paths and they would, uh, meet with the general plan being completed and then a municipal code update after that. So with that, open to any questions, any thoughts, directions or?
I like the, um, I like the flow of how that goes. Cause for those of you who are around on the council, when we had this discussion about RV port parking, and I'm sure Mr. Shepherd can remember, for as many people who, um, think it's a nuisance, there are as many people that think it's a property rights issue. Um, and so I think that this is not something that just a few of us should decide here. I think it should be something that should be vetted through the public in that. through the public in that process, and again, those of you who were around when it happened, it was a very, very heated and very, very long process, so I don't, I don't want to take this lightly because, again, I could sit there and nitpick all the things that I think are wrong, but as I thought would be something that would go smoothly, it did not the last time, because there was a lot of people that says, that's my property, I should be able to do some things with it that I want to do, and so there needs to be a give and take and a balance, so I don't know if there's any other comments, I am going to open it up to the public and then, and then I can bring it back afterwards unless you had some general comments.
You know, Mayor, I, I do agree with you, I mean, it is something that, you know, with the size of the lots and, and things like that, that it's very hard to dictate to individuals, you know, on their property, I mean, the difference between my lot, which has a, an RV and a enclosed trailer side by side in my backyard, like one of the pictures, I have a huge lot, and I can put another trailer on the other side of my yard, then you go to Eastgate and they have no side yard. I have a nephew that lives over there in Eastgate, and he's lucky to get a wheelbarrow down each side, and, you know, it's, unless we as a body are going to dictate the size of the lot, and we as a body are going to dictate that they must have side yard for RV parking, then it limits, you know, what kind of construction and stuff will go in there, I think that, that we should do, like you, like you said, Mayor, a, a more of a comprehensive, you know, expanded discussion on this.
But wouldn't we do that with a muni, a muni code update specifically for this? Wouldn't we have public notice, public notices and people could come specifically for that?
For?
For a muni code update?
Yeah, but if we're going to do a comprehensive update, we're going to do some workshops and kind of break it up, we don't want to try to tackle nineteen titles all in one workshop, we're going to break it up in different pieces and do several workshops over the course of several meetings so that we can address which issues we're changing throughout the whole.
Well, I, I guess my concern is when you said, we're hoping to get started, I don't, I, I don't want this to get lost in the general plan.
All I'm looking to is, council nods their head, we already budgeted for this work to start, we're going, as long as you're comfortable, we're going to start in January unless you say not to. We, we budgeted for this work, you know, we had anticipated originally that it would follow after the general plan starting, but our general plan is, you know, a little bit behind our overall, we were hoping to be right in the adoption, so we want to get this started on our original track, recognizing there's just a little bit of overlap, but we're ready to get started and it's already a budgeted item, unless council wants to go a different direction, we'd like to get our efforts started on this as soon as January.
Well, yeah, I, I think certainly we need to get started, it's budgeted, and, and I think that's the way to do this. I remember, I was here too, and when we went through this process last time, I think, I think the real key here coming out, you know, it's been a while back, so I, I think what we came out of that, if it became a public safety, health issue, right, otherwise parking in front of windows, you know, to where you couldn't get access and that sort of thing, or doors and that sort of thing, so, and I, and I know that some of that's happening today, and, and I think in some of that, or, again, not part of this, but part of something else in that book, I think identifies that, is that right, Toby?
Yeah, if it's part in front of a window, that's just a public health and safety issue under, under, under the building codes, so.
Right, so those are some of the things.
There's other ways that we can tackle some of these issues.
Right, and maybe cleaning up some of that, maybe that could reflect in some of these things that we're going to try to clean up instead of going all over trying to find it.
So, if someone cannot park in front of a window, and I turned in a complaint to code enforcement because?
That was an incorrect interpretation, from my opinion, he was a temporary, and that his direction and your, his answer was incorrect, I do not believe that was a correct answer. I believe the way, in that particular situation, that they can be cited for nuisance.
Well, I, I drove by there today, and they still have all of these vehicles parked in their front driveway.
They have made some progress, we, it is an ongoing complaint and an ongoing issue, we're trying to get to solutions.
See.
That's probably one of the most egregious situations we have in town, for sure.
It's, it's horrible, and so the person that complained to me about it is thinking, yet again, the city council's not doing anything.
They're working on it, we do feel that our existing code, we can get compliance in that situation. That's definitely one of the most egregious.
That's one of these. Oh, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, most people, and Sergeant Coley can address, he's, he's talked to that individual, you know, and he did a simple little tool with that particular resident and said, okay, stand out here on the sidewalk, close your eyes and open your eyes, feel good about what you see, right, I mean, it's trying to get people to recognize that you're not being a good neighbor, right, and finding ways to get compliance, right?
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the public, anyone like to speak on this item? Again, we're not taking any action, we're just going to give in a little bit of direction, I guess.
Well, having spent over a hundred hours of my time on that ordinance and helping write the ordinance, I still think there was a little bit too much of the government's interfering into our property rights. You know, I'm a firm believer that government is best handled when it's small and doesn't get into my face and into my space, how can you tell a person who paid three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a home that they can't put concrete in and they want? What business is it of governments? Where you are not supposed to be the aesthetic police. I have red rock in front of my house, if I lived in the city, I'd probably be told I couldn't do that. Because I don't want to water grass, I don't want to mow grass or anything else, why should I, as a citizen owning the property, be required to have lawn? Why? You can't tell me in good faith that it's your business as government to be the aesthetic police. Now, if somebody, and I see these places, and if the people around it get together and talk to the person, it's not your job to go talk to them. Sorry, it's the neighbor's job. And I've heard people say, well, that guy, his property reduced my property value. Prove it, take him to court, and the court will make him change. Not the city, it's not an ordinance, it's the value that the neighbors place in their property, and they can get it supported by realtors who do things like that, and they can go to court. I am a firm believer that property rights of the citizen greatly outweigh the city's aesthetic desires. No, I, I live in a mobile home park and there's really ratty places, and they can be made to clean up because they don't own the property, they only owe the mobile home sitting on the property and they pay rent, that's what I do. And when they come and tell me I need, I'm doing something wrong, then I need to take care of it. But it's not government's, it's not government's right, it's the citizen's right. You were right, Mayor, when you said it's about property rights. And, now, I am going to say one good thing about you guys right now, you had a brain with that last thing before this, you did not come out and pass an ordinance or support an ordinance, the idea was great, support it, but not make a law. I would imagine that if you took that, that book and took a look at everything in that book, there's a lot of overlap, there's a lot of contradiction, and it needs to be cleaned up. I agree, it needs to be cleaned up, and it needs to be cleaned up to the point where it takes the city governments to keep them out of the citizens' lives. If citizen A has something that citizen B doesn't like, why should they be able to come to the government and have that person persecuted? They shouldn't be, it's the citizen who needs to talk to the other citizen, or maybe several citizens, it's not the government's job. Ken, you're absolutely right, they are putting too much of the government into our lives, into our pockets, and I know I'm on the red.
Okay.
So, to sum it all up, stay out of the citizen's business.
Mr. Shepherd, I have to, I agree in some part with you, but if you are living across the street and you've paid money for your, for your house and you maintain it, and maybe you don't have grass, maybe you've gone drought tolerant, okay, so you don't have grass in your yard, but it looks nice, but across the street, the person has decided that they're going to forget about any type of a yard, and they're going to have three vehicles sitting on their grass, a boat that's covered in tarp, you can't even see hardly the front of the house because of this, they've tried to talk to this neighbor, more than one of the neighbors, and he pretty well blows them off, so how many people in that situation have money to take that neighbor to court? Most people don't, and most people, when you live in a neighborhood, you need to be maybe socially cognizant that you're in a neighborhood and you need to try and get along, you can all have different ideas, but if you had to live across the street from that, and I'm not even talking property values, I'm just talking about driving home and having to look at that every day, I, I don't think that, it's not in our right to try and help those people out. That's my personal opinion, and because I've, I've had people complain to me about it, and I've driven by, and I agree with them.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
The municipal code, that's public property, right? Where do I go to read it?
On our website.
Oh, it's on the website?
Yep.
I thought you were going to hand me that book.
Well.
No, it's one hundred percent searchable on our website, if you go on the government code, you just search municipal code, and you can go to that section and you can search any word or phrase, and it'll show you all the locations that it occurs in that document.
Does the library have a copy of that?
A hard copy, sure. We try to get people to go online just because it shows all the most recent changes, so all the, it'll list ordinances that may not be codified yet, but that have been passed by this body, so, I mean, it costs money, obviously, to codify every time we do an ordinance, so we've done a few recently, so we try to do those once a year, twice a year, and then, that's why we try to push people to the website, because it's got the most updated information.
Okay, thanks.
Paula Redfern, Series resident. So, when I read the, the minutes from the last meeting on August, from August fourteenth, when the gentleman kind of brought this whole issue up, recreational vehicles were mentioned, but it also mentioned the parking on an unimproved surface, which, having worked in code enforcement in this city for six years, that was like our number two complaint, and we never had an ordinance against it. Worked on one, worked on it with Tom, but it never came to fruition. Having worked in four other jurisdictions, I'm currently working on putting together ordinance, changing our ordinance for parking on an unimproved surface, and so I kind of put one together for Series, just so you know, this kind of covers a lot of the issues that come up in other jurisdictions, so if they have a, an ordinance for parking on an unimproved surface, a lot of times what somebody will do is they'll put strips of concrete, but it doesn't cover the whole thing, and so you get vehicle fluids leaking into the soil, to the groundwater, all that good stuff, and it also doesn't look as aesthetically pleasing as a permanent concrete like they were showing on the side of the driveway and the side yard. I could just give this to you, Toby?
Sure.
What I did there, there's one section or one sentence in there that's highlighted, and it's highlighted specifically because part of it would need to be determined by Tom, and that would be the area of the front yard which would need to be landscaped as opposed to concrete. And it also specifically mentions what an improved surface is, which in that I put four inches of concrete, which is pretty much the standard. Also, I'd like to say, having worked in these other jurisdictions and have done tons of research in cities throughout California and their ordinances on various issues, Series has an excellent ordinance as it relates to zoning and public nuisance, especially public nuisance issues, there are some things that could be added or changed a little, a little bit, but compared to other cities, it's great, I'm always, people will contact me, I'm the local contact within our region, and they'll ask, you know, what, what are you using, I'll say, don't use ours, here's what you need to check out, and they, they love it, and as far as I know, they're presenting it to their councils and stuff, so I'd just like you to, to be aware of that, that Series ordinance is actually pretty good in, in those issues. Thank you.
Well, we'll hope to make it better in the spring and summer. Anyone else?
Good evening, and I wish all of you a happy holiday, there upon us, and I've received some insight from Toby, I'm the gentleman, John Warren, who started this conversation back in August, and I think Mr. Rhino pointed out some of the problems in dealing with neighbors, because you can talk to them, you can ask them, you can be nice to them, and other members in your neighborhood can do the same thing, and it falls on deaf ears. So, sometimes, a small portion of our community demands ninety percent of the action that's available from our enforcement agencies to keep our community looking nice. I've sent some of you some pictures of some neighborhoods, especially the one up on Payne, north of Virginia Park Schools, and I drove by there the other day, and I think I've had some conversations with some of you in regards to that particular property, and someone has done a great job in cleaning up ninety percent of the problem at that particular location. And I don't know if it was the city police department, code enforcement, or maybe your friend went and said something to them and caused that action to take place, but it did take place, so I know the city is making some small steps in cleaning up a lot of blight, but in other cases, they're not. And in talking with some people and getting some suggestions, when I came here in August, you all decided that we're going to kind of push this down the road and maybe not try to let it get lost in the big picture of the general plan, and it was my understanding, and I think it was said, that we were going to do this at about the same time the general plan was going to be done. That's not the case. Now, that's back in August, and now we're in December, just around the corner, in a couple of days, and we're talking about kicking this thing down the road to November.
And not sure, how, how, how did you come to that conclusion? I, I think Mr. Wells said we should start in January.
General plan is going to be completed at the beginning of next year.
Spring of twenty eighteen.
January, February, March, then they're going to start working on this particular problem and pushing it out till November.
We would start working on this now.
Starting now and getting it completed are two different things, okay?
That's our job.
Back in August, back in August, you said that this was going to be done in conjunction?
John, I, I know, I don't want to get into timelines, okay? You know, we can't turn back the clock, we're, we've said we're going to be working on it, it's budgeted, if that's not good enough, then I'm sorry, but that's the process that we're going to make, we've heard your comments, we're moving forward with them, but you have to understand, it's not your timeline, we have a lot of other things that we're dealing with at the city at the same time, so we will get to those. at the same time. So we will get to those, but we're not here to have a discussion about timeline, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay, so what I heard, Mr. Wells, is that we will be starting this. It is budgeted for next year. We're starting the process to comprehensively update our municipal code. We're doing that prior to the adoption of the new general plan.
Right.
Okay, so, just so that we're clear on that. Are there any other comments? Any direction that, or anything else that you need?
Well, I believe he said January. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's December now. We would get started. We would get the, uh, the details worked out with our legal counsel to get that started.
Okay.
Um, we, my last conversation with Doug White, he indicated they'd be able to get the resources dedicated to start the process in January, the timeline that we would have this thing teed up for the workshops and really get into the nuts and bolts summer, which would be right after our general plan completion and we'd be able to get this thing wrapped up by October.
And, and I, again, I can speak from having gone through this before. This is not going to be a quick process. You're going to have people on both sides of the aisle. And although I probably agree more toward what John is saying than Mr. Shepherd, there will be equally as many people on both sides of the aisle and we have to be cognizant of that. So...
And we strongly feel that, you know, under a comprehensive, we'll be able to address some of the issues about parking on the lawn and defining what a lawn is, what is a hard surface, what is not, getting those definitions absolutely clear comprehensively across the documents so that we don't have, you know, some of this, we want to eliminate as many loopholes as we possibly can to be the best internally consistent we can.
And then by the time that we adopted it, we would have a code enforcement department?
That's...
I mean, more than, and I don't mean anything...
We can all hope.
Anything bad towards Sergeant Coley, but I mean, we're actually going to have, hopefully, more than one and a half people on board.
I, I would love that to be the case, but as we all know, our, our fiscal challenges will require some difficult decisions for that to occur with what we know today.
And in the process... And in the process, you're working on 2018, 19 budget?
Uh, not yet, but we will start that after the first of the year, of course. Little details.
Okay, with that, we will move to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing done. We'll move to reports. Is there anyone on the council that would like to make an announcement? Um, I just had one. Um, we were successful again at the bell ringing contest for the Salvation Army last year. So we've had it three out of the four years. I will be asking for my colleagues to help me. I don't know when the date is yet again, but I've been pretty harsh on the mayor from the city of Turlock, so I'm sure he will up his game. But, um...
I think he cheated last year, didn't he?
We didn't cheat.
[laughing]
We had the most money and the kettle.
We did.
No, we did.
We did.
We won.
Oh, I thought they took first.
They won the year before. They won the year before. We won three out of the four years.
To do it.
So, um, and then I think we, well, I won't bring it up, but I know we have an opening of Christmas Tree Lane, so I'll leave that for somebody else to bring up.
Well, that was what I was going to say, but...
Hey, I'll start with you, Councilmember Rhino?
Well, that was what I was going to say, was remind everyone about...
I didn't give any details. I just kind of...
Christmas Tree Lane opening Saturday night.
Okay. And I would like to say, Mayor, when you have the date, as usual, I want to take the first shift.
Street sweepers.
Great. Bell ringing.
Oh, I'll take the second so I can be late.
Councilmember Lane?
Well, I just got it. As fate would have it, you know, everything always happens.
Awesome.
I just got an email from Marge Derby saying that the mayor's kettle will be December 16th at Walmart.
Awesome.
All right.
Starts at 10:00 AM, 10 to 12, 12 to 2.
And I'll do the 2?
I'll do the 12.
I'll do the 8 to 10.
There isn't an 8, 10 to 12.
I'll do 10 to 12.
You do 10 to 12.
Linda does 12 to 2.
You, you tell me.
2 to 4.
You want 2 to 4?
Uh, I'll take 4 to 6. When is that? What day?
December 16th, he said, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, December 16th. And I'll, I'll come in.
You'll come in.
In between there. I'll, I'll help out with you guys each time. So...
So the mayor isn't going to ring?
Yeah, I've got to, I gotta come in there sometime.
Okay.
Relieve somebody.
He could take a half hour from each one of us.
Yeah. All right, so, um, Councilmember Lane, did you have anything?
Nothing.
Councilmember Drossel?
Nothing.
Okay, so we will start. Suzanne? Tom?
I'm the mayor.
Toby?
Uh, as was approved by the council at the last meeting, the applications for the TOT committee are now on our website. And, uh, thank you to Diane. She's created it as a fillable form, so you can actually go online, complete that form, submit it electronically. So, uh, you don't have to print it out and bring it in, but we'll take a hard copy as well. So those will be accepted until the 15th, uh, the end of the day on that Friday, the 15th. Uh, Centennial Committee will be meeting on, uh, December 5th at 5:30 here at the community center. Uh, we will be bringing an item on the December 11th council meeting to kind of set the framework for the plan of attack for the Centennial Committee and the efforts, uh, that they've been working on for the past year. So it'll lay out the schedule of events for next year as well as some of the ideas for fundraising. Um, and , uh, we'll look at probably the resolution of support of the overall, um, fundraising effort, which is the Centennial Plaza, which I'll show us pictures of that. So we look forward to those efforts on December 11th, kind of kicking that process off for next year. Uh, and as we mentioned, the, uh, Christmas activities, uh, this Saturday, starting at 5:30.
Okay. Mr. Westbrook?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update on Forest Street. Unfortunately, we were not able to open, um, Thanksgiving. Uh, we've had a couple of rain delays, including the one last night. We were trying to stripe this morning and open up this afternoon, but it was too damp. So we scheduled for tomorrow the striping to go down up Forest Street and open up tomorrow afternoon to traffic. Uh, second point is our arches are not here yet. They're supposed to be delivered here next week for their, um, construction and to be installed. And thirdly, our landscaping is still two or three weeks out to be completed, but we're going to be able to open up the street to businesses in the meantime. So...
Okay.
Daryl, will we have to close all of the street again when the arches go up? Or just the, the portion?
Just the portions. We'll start at one end, close down that side, and we'll work our way down.
Okay.
Brett?
Rich? Uh, just real quick. Just wanted to thank everybody earlier that made comments about the, uh, efforts that we had on Fifth Street. I know I wasn't there, um, but I know the guys took it pretty seriously and did everything they could to minimize the damage, not only to that building, but to the adjacent occupancies as well. So thank you for your, uh, shows of appreciation. Uh, and then fire service just likes to put out reminders this time of year. Uh, so we put all our decorations up and electrical wiring and trees inside of houses, uh, to make sure everybody is, is vigilant with their, uh, smoke detectors in their houses and to make sure that the, all the appliances that they're using are in good condition, that they're not using indoor lights outside, that kind of thing. Um, and then if anybody ever has any questions about what is or isn't safe, that they can contact the fire department and we'll send somebody out to, just to give them a quick safety check to make sure everything's okay. So, thank you.
Okay. Jeremy? Bettina was here, but I think she's left the building. So, okay. With that, we will move to closed session. We have two items, conference with labor negotiator and in public employment, fire chief. After that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, December 11th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.